Might as well, let's take a look at the decisions, as long as we have a few minutes.
One thing as we start discussing 144 Newton, and this just started coming up because they are going to be applying to the ZVA for special permit for the house. And the fire department is making more of an issue on driveway widths, and there was a comment from the building inspector to the zoning administrator noting that the driveway width did not conform with the fire department's 14-foot requirement. I talked with the fire chief about trying to reduce that down in this instance, down to 12 feet. This also impacts the area of Merian Street. The main concern here is with the length of the driveway. They get concerned about inability of residents to maintain a clear driveway in the winter, and that they want additional room for laying down hoses. That 10-foot driveway, in their opinion, is not sufficient. With 144, the fire chief agreed that, well, he can live with 12 feet. And what I was explaining to him is that the board is very cognizant of the impact of driveway widths on our scenic roads, and that the additional pavement also significantly impacts the need for additional stormwater, and that we need to try to look at some sort of compromise situation here, rather than just saying a uniform 14 feet, because it's really, if we're talking about, yes, we are dealing with winter and a good amount of snow here, but the remaining nine months out of the year, that's additional stormwater and runoff that's being generated from a driveway where there isn't the concern of the fire department. So, trying to see, engage him in trying to look at things on a case-by-case basis, rather than just saying, okay, every driveway has to be 14 feet. So, on 144, he agreed that 12 feet. And again, because it's going downhill and sort of meandering down, he thought he could live with 12 feet. At the bottom, he wasn't concerned, and how it is perpendicular to Newton Street, he's not concerned about going in, but he was concerned about a tough winter, 10 feet just not being enough that's maintained by the property owners.
It would be lovely to look at the probabilities of, yes, and its statistical.
Yeah, I mean, what are the chances? There are a lot of clogged driveways in western, I don't remember having actually encountered any, but...
Right, it just gets crazy. The other thing is like, I'm surprised he's not concerned about perpendicular to our aspect of the driveway or even road, because usually you come into a passing storm, we need a giant white trumpet to tell you to the road, you know, 16 feet.
And this came up with Love Lane, where the construction, Love Lane itself and the stone walls, he can't swing wide. Newton, he can swing wide. And I think it came up on Love Lane, that if this was on high line, it wouldn't have been an issue, because you can swing wide and enter in. This is going to be one of those things that most towns deal with fighting their fire department on widths of subdivision roads. Here, when they were dealing with 200-foot lengths, 300-foot lengths, you know, they're approaching lengths of some small streets, and I think that's how they're approaching it.
But this is one house.
Exactly. That's why it needs...
It's not like a street.
They're trying to apply a residential street standard to a driveway. And what I was telling the fire chief in a phone call today and by email is that there needs to be more of a compromised view of this, because just plugging in 14 feet...
Yeah, it's crazy. It's on our roads.
Exactly. It's wider than the lane of Newton Street itself, and that there's other ways we can accommodate snow storage and all that stuff, if that's the concern. But he at least had backed off of 14 feet on 144.
14 feet is wider than the part of the street I live on.
I understand, yeah, that's...
It's wider than most of the...
Yeah.
Was it what they wanted the driveway 105 conquered to be originally before we got it down to 14?
16.
And why does 144 need a ZVA?
It doesn't have a front inch.
What's the problem with Merian? Same thing?
Same thing.
What's the problem there? It's not as long a driveway.
No, but you know how we had those nice curves? He says the turning radius needs to look at, because the template for his ladder truck can't navigate that second, because it's a reverse curve, he can't navigate that second one. So, the Merian is preparing a revised plan that looks at keeping the disturbance the same, but maybe just smoothing that curve, so it's not as hard of transition. So, they're going to be coming back to the board with just a minor change to try to address that.
He needs the full ladder truck up and down.
That's their standard. If they can get that, then they can get anything.
Well, yeah. Does he need a ladder truck for a three-story house?
That's their standard, is to have the ladder truck being called up.
Who's standard?
Well, now that...
Bears. We're talking about bears.
Because it has everything on it. It has everything on it.
Right. It's just like, interesting to see what some of the adjoining towns with small roads and what their fire departments are willing to accept. I'm just thinking about my own driveway. If this had come up back then...
You wouldn't have gotten it.
I wouldn't have gotten it. It would have been this huge 14-foot with no curve, filling in the wetlands. It would have just been plain...
It would have...
Wouldn't have gotten it. Right, and then we would have been linked down to drive.
This may sound incredibly insane, but has there ever been something in which, in other words, a fire suppression system in the loop of a wide driveway was something to be considered?
That's just crazy talk, boy.
I mean, I don't know if the profile of one of those things can be done in a way where you would see it, or it's just impossible to do.
I don't know, but this is, you know, if we have to apply city standards, you know, so we can get a ladder truck up to five, you know, five stories.
What if the owner put in a sprinkler system in his house? I mean, would that affect their standards?
I think this is one of those that, and the fire chief was going to try to come in when we had Bob Michel on the quarter of study, but that was just going to be too big of a meeting to try to accommodate having a general discussion with him as well as that. There really needs to be sort of like a back and forth just discussion, not pertaining to an application, but just on general policy standards, as far as what is the expectation of the fire department to access the property? And how do we balance it against the impact on the properties, where we're trying to basically have these houses disappear, or at least appear like they've not impacted the natural environment at all? He understands what the board is trying to do, and has acknowledged our efforts. And so, you know, he's been very accommodating on some of the applications where we've worked out situations. But this is going to continue to be an issue, and I think there needs to be something written down, so that both can point to. Otherwise, it's just going to be battle on every single application.
Be interesting to see. I mean, Grattan's housing stock is very similar, you know, there's a third town, I think.
Well, I think it's not something that planning boards and fire departments have not butt it heads against. It's really here, it's the fact that driveways are typically just you, you know, you're accessing a single house. I can understand having limits on entrance columns and stone walls, because if it's 12 feet wide, you could actually damage equipment by hitting it if it was more narrow. But on some of these, we're really, we're trying to avoid trees and all this other things, you know? Does every single driveway have to be this straight shot?
We have a lot of homes in town that are historic and have some, still have little nine-foot wide driveways. How does the fire department intend to help those people, a two-and-a-half-story house?
You're out of luck.
Yeah.
Honestly, that's it. There are some properties that just are out of luck, because they can't access it. If they have two stone pillars on the side and it's nine feet, they can't get down.
Well, they have smaller equipment.
They have smaller, they have things they can do.
And the older houses are closer to the road, to a lot of them.
No, but not all.
So, I mean, this is one of those issues that is just going to continue to...
That's good.
Right. Let's read it. Sorry, I started reading it, so let's see. William 144 first.
Yeah. So, you can review, but you can't vote?
Right.
Aren't I in the same vote for 165 Orchard?
Yes.
By the way, this raises a question. And it relates to the general review process concerning houses on nonconforming lots. We wrote a decision on the Conant Road House, Jeffrey Bump is suing. And then that Jeffrey Bump had to go to ZVA for the special permit.
Right.
And my understanding is they turned him down, because they thought the house was too large?
I didn't think that...
They're booting him back to us, I think. I think that's what happened.
What I heard from Noreen was that they continued him to March 11th. They wanted him to submit, basically, plans that he prepared for us, but did not submit to the ZVA. Existing house footprints, proposed neighborhood RGFA plan. But I hadn't heard, I heard that they commented that the house was large, but I didn't hear that.
I thought he commented that they said it was too large.
Well, that's, they commented, but it didn't get, there was no decision.
No decision yet, but they could cut it down.
Yeah.
Which means it bounces back to us. This is what we've been trying to talk to them about for two years.
Yeah, and I voted 144 and Jeffrey at 103 Conant. We told them when they were submitting that they could be held to the 10%.
Nobody pays any attention to that, though, you know? That's the problem.
Well, that's why his 5,000 became less than, you know, basically a high 4,000, because it definitely was...
This is another one that could get bounced.
At least it wouldn't be because of the 10%, but that is, the mass is a concern here.
So, on the first page, third paragraph at the bottom, and the last one, the form should be from.
Okay.
And then, on page two, third paragraph, western and eastern should be southern and northern, because that's what you may have, talking about the existing house. Is it correct that these, that the bridge is actually lower than the existing, relative to the grade? I guess it's because it's lower than the...
Hey, Alan, you didn't make it through yet?
No.
We didn't get there. Just looking at the 1, 2, 3, 4 paragraph, and Mr. Hidalos said at the sidewalk, that the house be moved forward, I mean, this was a comment that he made, that the house should be moved forward?
Yes, well...
I don't understand that.
The consideration should be given to moving the house forward.
Okay, and then where is...
The rationale says later on to bring the house more in line with existing houses.
Right, okay, but that is a sort of, it says whole, just puts the house...
Right.
And then they did not want to discuss plans that did not reflect the butter's desires. They are the...
The applicants.
The applicants, and the applicants didn't want to discuss plans that did not reflect the butter's desires.
Right.
I love to have trouble following. He said, he said she said...
It's evident that the two directors of others felt strongly against moving the house forward, and they, being the applicants, did not want to discuss plans which did not reflect the butter's desires. Or he instead of they, because it refers to Mr. Canavan.
Yeah.
Well, actually, the parallelism would be Mr. Canavan added that, that, and that...
And that they did not want to discuss.
Right.
What do you mean by, in Mr. Curdassie, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, one down, said it is their plan to remake Bittersweet? I would say that would be removed.
No, remove.
To replant the area with appropriate or non-invasive...
Here's a little more of a sentence. He added that it was commented at the sidewalk to move the house forward to it sat in between the two adjacent homes.
So...
He added that comments made at the sidewalk, with respect to moving the house forward...
Yeah, make that last part work.
But I don't know what the last part means. This is where I...
What paragraph are you on?
This 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Eight, yeah, last sentence.
What does it start with?
He added that it was commented at the sidewalk to move the house forward to it sat in between the two adjacent homes.
Here comes the whole word.
So, it was aligned with the adjacent homes, and that's what the meaning was supposed to be. So, that it was, yeah.
Two, and it would be to sit between the two adjacent...
He added that comments made at the sidewalk with respect to moving the house forward, aligned it with the two adjacent homes. Is that, is that the gist of that sentence?
Right.
Okay.
In the first paragraph on page four, it's probably all civil engineering speech, she said the septic system will be up gradient of the septic system. The septic system will be up gradient, I assume, of the septic field, or of the house?
It's at the house.
The up gradient of the house.
A hill from the house. Is that what that means?
Right.
Yeah, so she said the septic system will be uphill from the house, which will require constant pumping and a generator.
This is an image I don't think much about. They always say that the house is to move forward, but that yet starts ending...
Hanging in the air.
It must have been more caution language than the actual me and you guys.
And yet, his next sentence is interesting, and I don't understand. Mr. Conway said there is no engineering reason for optimal house location, except, I mean...
With the exception of moving the house further up the hill.
I mean, is that a sort of a nonsensical sentence to anybody?
So, the...
I don't know what it means.
The intent was that, because the board was looking to see if there was any engineering reason that should dictate the location of the house. And David had said, no, unless you're moving it up the hill, and that's where the zoning violations enter into the calculations.
Bingo.
So, Mr. Conway said right there, with no engineering reason for optimal house location, with the exception of the violation of the zoning by law when you move the house up the hill.
Next paragraph, first sentence, starting from Charlie Turner. I think it would be cleaner just to say, but for adjacent to 152 Newton Street, we found it has no remaining viable trees. And will require more plantings.
I thought that it had been refuted, that the septic system would require constant pumping and a generator.
Yes, it was.
So, I think we should just put that in there to sort of close that loop, my concept.
On page four, who voted for it, and I think, right? Have approved the decision as a matter of four?
It will need to be yes.
For something from the 3, 1, 5, 6, the board announced for the side section regulations, and that they be submitted in advance. Tell me that you're ready. So, coin that, that house should be moving to the house. It's not the last, it's not where the...
It is.
Did you get Ugon House here?
Yes.
Well, this one is, this condition, page eight, condition eight is an easy one to satisfy. Reconstruction, no one else shall be directed down the driveway on Newton Street. It shouldn't be hard to accomplish at all.
Made up to get that pump going with the generator.
So, here you say, the height is 3697, on page two you say it's 3696.
I don't know, just noticed that.
Is that the hour?
No, police regulations.
Yeah, I, it's part of the last decision on 103, when the board wanted that reference in there, I put it as appendix.
Construction interference, okay, this was the point that I think David raised.
That's right, rather than putting it in that condition, so.
Point C on page 10 of 12 says, you should achieve 40 DVA standard... And they're booting him back to us, I think. I think that's what happened.
What I heard from Noreen was that they continued him to March 11th. They wanted him to submit basically plans that he prepared for us but did not submit to the ZVA. Existing house footprints, proposed a neighborhood RGA plan. But I hadn't heard, I heard that they commented that the house was large, but I didn't hear that.
I thought he commented that they said it was too large.
Well, that's, they commented, but it didn't get, there was no decision.
No decision yet, but they could cut it down.
They could, yeah.
In which case it bounces back to us. This is what we've been trying to talk to him about for two years.
Yeah. And I vote 144 and Jeffrey at 103 Conant. We told them when they were submitting that they could be held to the 10%.
Nobody pays any attention to that, though. You know? That's the problem.
Well, that's why his 5,000 became less than, you know, basically a high 4,000 because it definitely was...
This is another one that could get bounced, it seems to me.
At least it wouldn't be because of the 10%. But that's, that is, the mass is a concern, yeah.
So on the first page, third paragraph at the bottom, and the last one, the form should be from...
Okay.
And then on page two, first paragraph, western and eastern should be southern and northern, because that's what you may have, talking about these two towns.
Well, this one is an easy one. This condition, page eight, condition eight is an easy one to satisfy. Construction, no one else shall be directed down the driveway on Newton Street. This shouldn't be hard to accomplish at all.
Might have to get that pump going with the generator.
So here you say the height is 3697. On page two, you say it's 3696. I'm hearing you say the height is 3697. On page two, you say it's 3696. I'm hearing you say the height is 3697. On page two, you say it's 3696. I'm hearing you say the height is 3697.
Well, this one is an easy one. This condition, page eight, condition eight is an easy one to satisfy. Construction, no one else shall be directed down the driveway on Newton Street. This shouldn't be hard to accomplish at all.
Shouldn't be hard. Might have to get that pump going with the generator.
So here you say the height is 3697. On page two, you say it's 3696. I'm hearing you say the height is 3697.